I think through how was meeting over. And to make sure under really few places in our indication.
Your Lord, your Lord, for all of the people today. Someone with right to resolve all our problems. The peace of the.
Uh, congratulations.
Yeah, I guess so.
Thank you. What's all that? Be there. All right, Mr. Brady, do we read the style CD?
Did you say? On it. The relation. Yeah, question. Well. They. It.
Yes, must be again. Uh, yeah. And. How. Um. I think. And. Well. Um. In terms of. Um. About. About. Oh, come on, the rest of this. We were worried. Yeah. For. Go on. Yeah. No. Right. Very well. Exactly. Coming to the reason. Down from stage two. Right. Where is. The body. Uh, also. Okay. That. Right. Right. Thank you.
Yes.
Forty three all those. That's right. It's time. In. All right. The present. Like. And. But. And. That. Those. Uh. All right. I. It. Four. All right. You're telling. That's what. Yeah. Good. Is anyone one. I have. Or. Right. Where it is. May. Talking. By. It's not. You know. This thing. You can move on. That. Up. Great. What. I. We. He. In. It. As look. You can start. Again. Thank. You. It. Puts pressure on nerve. By. Which slowly calls. Those stuff. To make. And if Kenzie Scott. Well. And. What. Take twenty two. And help. Daniel. Who has ever members. Today. To raise awareness on D and G. And therefore be called in the board. Also, it recognize. Look. They. For. It. Good. So. We have. Have some. Delivered to. In the family. All right. It. Look. The. This. Four. I. Do. Pretty. And. Delta one. All. And six. Six. Four. Oh. One. Good. Yeah. Uh. Oh. That's. Both. It. So. Go. Uh. Uh. But she's gone. Like. It. Nothing. They. On. Like. The other. It. Our work and what was. Well. It. And. It. What. It is. Something. There's. Um. Bit more. Deep. So. Right. This is the. Is it any problem to do that? From general without all. All. Sessions. Problem. On. This part. Yeah. From what. I want. Yeah. Well. It must be about. Two. Was it? Did I ask? All right. Why? Are you? It's. All. It. Uh. This part. On. These are the cause and the reasons that. Only you can make. Procession or. That. Right. Good. Okay. Yeah. Of you.
Thank you. And. Well. Okay. That. That. It. For. Okay. Here.
The Nancy. Change which you never thought. Agent though. You.
This. Uh. Let's say. You know. Can I? It. That. Happened. But.
Where was it going? Okay.
Hey. Okay. Uh. There. Up. This. Then. Of course. Of course. We made. Decision. It. To. Yep. It. That. On. It. Where. And. The player. The morning. Always. I. I. The. The. I give. Uh. Or. It. One. It. It. That. On that. Okay. The same. In fact. Every. The. Twenty. So we look. For the three. This two. Which would be twenty four hours. The next is sixty hours. So. The over. For that eight. Yeah. Six. It's like. A. What. Instead. But. Can see. Some. Don't. I. You. Hey. And what. What. That. This. But. It may. For. Thank you. This is. It. Uh. Yeah. So. What is. Now. That. Yeah. Uh. You know.
That was. Perfectly. And. Hold on one more. On top. This will. Pay it off. It doesn't make. Help. Me. This. How. This. Four. Three. It. Well. The. Three. I. It. Then. This. I. Uh. The order. How time you. Would. Yeah. Up. The. Thank you. Of course. It. It. Important. Back. The. Time will come however, I might need. First. Well, I'm. Well. And. Well. You will. Yes. Right. Okay. And. This. It's. One. Or. Right. Yeah. Well. Uh. Wow. So. So we're. They stayed. To have a call. If he. That means it doesn't go to. Another three of. They. Pull that out. Right. But. Okay. How. Yeah. First. Yeah. They. Well. Should. It. It's not. And. But. It should. I. All. Good. Yeah. Up. I've been there. Uh. He. Committed to term.
There. Uh. Is it.
But. That. All of it. I agree. Right. Real. So. Up. And do is. The. Fair. Whatever. Same thing with the paper, our employees and addressing. Uh. System. We handle. The. Okay. Then. But. And then. The. Plus. Yeah. Up. Right. But what it does do is it goes. About having. So. Uh. The board. Decreased. Or. Now. To me. Was. Is. Yeah. You. Um, I got to. My whole. Little bit. I'll do that. With. That's. Where. Hey. Two. Right. Down. It.
We. This. Things. Power minute. The way. And. We have learned. I'm watching. I get home. What has. Something. Right, all. Uh. This. How. Our. School. Who. Um. Which is. Or. It's a. So. I mean.
Going out. Thirty eight minutes. Right. Or it's like. This is. Yeah. You. You know. This is. I'm in. Well. Boy. Thank you.
Uh, that's. My. Action policy just.
Sorry.
Not. It happened. It's. It's. It had. Um. Should be here. They're all.
I think so. Finishing. Down.
They wait.
But. To have. This. I. In the. You. All me. Yeah. Please. That's. Very. Took. Man, two hours.
Can they get the amount.
That.
It's. I. It. Don't even. It. It.
Listen, there's no. Okay. Well. Yeah. You know. Which.
At the job. And. Maybe. So. Session of payroll. Send the eight. You know. It's.
So. Well. Okay. He. But. And. You there. There. It. It. The. The. We're. In. In. Trail. He. Um. As for Harper's trip. Okay, okay. Well. That is for man. Each. Three. Yeah. It. Yeah. Yeah. It. All. I can make it. So. He got. For. Off. It's. The. Oh, what? And. So. Yeah. Are he. Get. To. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, we're. We got hour. Hour forty five more tonight. As. It. Two. It. Up. It. It was. Oh. It's. Some. The. Twenty. Twenty. There were two doors. Hey. Wait, or. We. Work. All. Okay. Then. Uh. What they have on. Just buzzes their phone. Then. Do their. Sports. Soon. Yes, there's all their phones, yes. Call. Do you have? Did what you're. Go to the site. You have a person so we. Get into your chair. Out of the. It will. Oh. It. Okay. So. Same tip. So. Turn to the. At work and also the work company regulation. At work. You're taking. About the. Uh, in your house. Start. Sample with a. Your. Right. But. Our attempt. Now, on request action. So. So. Keep that. True. Sure. Yeah. Now, when they. It. Uh. Okay. But. Well. Have time. So. Um. And. It. And. Any. Oh, but all the labor standard. So. Yeah. All. Right. Collection. I don't think it is. The. Would. Uh. The. The. Then our front. And your. In your lap. It can't be. Yeah. And. Page. Right now. For. Same could be said. The apartment. Any. In there. But. But. Now. To the. The. Step. But. Section. Step. Now. Their term. Then. That's what. They. In the. Season. That. Um. Kind of. Yeah. Now. Definitely. Awesome. That. That's still. Some of them. Or. On. That's. Hello. I. Actually. Well. That. Uh. I. Three. You want to. Because. Into. If they. House. There. This is. It's astonishing. But. But so. But no. Is. All. To. Actually. So, hey. I have a good question. Okay. You have. So. I was at work. Even less. Say. This. That. Look. But. Look. You paid for. But. Then. You got. Say. I. Or. Say. And. But. Let me. I saw. Hey. Yeah. But. And I think we. You. You see. Present. None. Okay. Well. Well. Also. Here. First. But. Well. The other. And. They. Yeah. What. If. Are we going. That. They. Give. All. That carry go. And. The world. So. Yeah. In. In them. But. So. What. The. The policy. Yeah. Okay. As well. Thank. But. Yeah. We. I. Yep. Well. But this. Much. True. Um. Well. Have. So. Just. Any. Where. Yeah. But. Yeah. Really. Yeah. But. They would. But. Yeah. This. Chair. I would. Put it. Oh. They all. All of it. Oh. So. We. So. Talk. On you. Yeah. Uh. Yeah. Oh. Uh. The. Stay. It. It. Okay. Up. But. It was a critical. Just. We. For. Ability. Yes, is gonna. Right. It's. That's. All. Take. Walked off. Very well. It. Wow. It's not doing. Here. For mobile. Call. We just. It. It. There's. Through. All. Right. As we have, right. Um. Yeah. Well. So. Yeah. No. Yeah. How. How. Well. So. All the. 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 What. And. The. Power. It. That. Or. And. It. Uh. Uh. It. Up. My. Oh. Well. For. That. Well. Yeah. 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 Yeah, they. It. All. Up. Up. It. It. Up. Sure. Up. Oh. Okay. Be there. It. All. Oh. Well. That's. Again. But. It's, um. It. So. Well. It. Okay. Okay. Those. The. And. It. So. Um, sections. Of. Is Article Five condition. In three. So. Important, you know, it's. On my. Is that we should. So. Is that. And. They. That's. We. Is. All. Alright. Oh. Or first, I work. And look. What. The inside. Right. Sections. And can you. Equip. So. My. He's not. Other. He. Like. Alright. Relative. So. But. Those. It was. Yeah. Five. That. Well. You're. It. Here. This. It isn't. The. Thanks, Al. We're gonna. We're gonna. Say. Or. On. You. Great. Um, stature. If no personal. On. We have had. Uh. Okay. Is that right? On. It maybe. Uh, so. Oh. Yeah. Yeah. For. Don't. So. Yeah. And. We have. This is. This. But. But now. First. Still in. I. I've played. And. It. Before. But it. Down, man, and they show on some of. Where it does that. Or if. It. And it's. It's a. Uh, I don't. But you were just describing that. This. What. So. You know, it's not written down, it's not. And not. He's right. Alright. That's you. Hmm. So. There are. Questions I'll have. Agree. I mean. I'm. Good. This. You did. And. That's. Or. It. Yeah. That. I. That's just. Eight, no. Four, no. I don't. I think. We got. We. With. We did. That's. So. Uh. It. It's. That's. Or. Yeah. Hope. I think. You know, this is.
Involve a potential to the town. Um, potential lawsuit, then. As has been done in the past, I would expect town manager to third law position, be formless. And that that occurred under Brian several times, I don't recall having to do that with Louis. I know Brian would have to do that, so. I think that's when. But as a general, we don't get involved in the personnel decision. We allow him to make it, and he informs us if it's. If there is some type of potential liability to a town.
And that's really the only time it should come. For if there is a potential liability, because outside of that, the town manager's personnel officer can go all these situations. We've now discussed the three, so if it. If it, if oppression can be made by a Ford, which is an example, and Ford is dismissed from the town. The town board may not, may not agree with that decision, but manager and staff may. Board comes and gets involved. The board creating personal liability for itself. How would you directly gone into a personal matter where legal liability issues arise? So. You were protected by having you make a decision and have that protection under my contract. That. And if they protect you, it's not extending to the board. So you really won't have that wall, but you won't have the wall, you won't have.
Our town manager and town attorney, resource officer bring this in close session if. If there's an issue under protected class.
Um, so the board's directly involved in personnel issue or informing the board of a situation that occurs or could arise. Not asking the board for direction on the decision, because that's certainly. What their implications of the city thought.
Well, I understand that. I just, there had been some decisions that had been made within the last year that were very poorly asked. And I just don't want that, I don't want that happening at all, because if there's something here that. Um, can address that somewhere or another. That's, that's where I'm kind of, that's the, I understand all those stuff you say, I understand that. But, uh, the same, at the same time, you know, we're not operating in a vacuum. Dealing, dealing with people. Dealing with people and the right way and wrong way to treat people and handle them. We've done some things that. Question. On. And.
Well, to what my, um, hand for you. People told me, said, somebody told him, you didn't listen to them, you can find them. But I. It started buzzing. Like, like. They, they are working in a certain apartment. And. They don't want to, anyone to know what's going on, that's why I want. It's that you didn't listen to them, you can find them. So, that's really the stuff they've broken up.
So saying that we need to be on top of things and that's true. Bottom line.
Of course. Absolutely.
Thanks. Which is good.
I think put a fine point on that, saying, you know, I, we, we, there, I, we can't, there's no way we can put every known situation in order. Um, I think that that's where, you know, we're, we're setting high, and we've given the language in here. And, you know, as the executive. We, we can be, we will be brought into it if, you know, if there's an issue that, you know, tends to liability to the town, but I think leaving. I understand what you're saying, and, and I think under trusting that. Things are going to get handled the way they should be, and people treated the way they're supposed to be treated. Because we have, with, what we're, what that means is we hold him accountable for, if something happens, he's accountable for it. It's on him, and then we hold him accountable how we hold him accountable for via his contract.
And also to expand on that, and I'm not saying we do the same, but yeah. Just an hypothetical. Let's say in the hangover the next. Twelve months or whatever his contract is, engages in a historical pattern. Twelve months or whenever his contract is up engages in a historical pattern of discrimination, you know, based on sex. Doesn't bring it to us, doesn't ever tell us about it. And all of a sudden, we get this. We start getting tons of calls. The female employees, then we have lawsuit, we have done that. Well, immediately that's addressed under his contract. As Bill's already. Discuss. So, you know, I think those are. Gets back to those two things. No one, he has an contract with us. Number two, the provisions are there. Because we, the protective provisions are there because we don't need to necessarily be involved in every milk and cranny and every personnel decision. We object, we actually subject the town to more liability, not less. Do that. But it is expected that the, the big issues will be brought to us in close section.
That part, it needs to be consistent. I mean, just to cause there's a big personnel decision that was made. Doesn't necessarily mean it requires a close discussion.
No, it has to be.
It has to be.
Liability issue.
Yes, right.
That's what we.
The other piece of that is run the risk of, say. Question came up with the board, it's information is disclosed about employee as personnel issue. That the board is asked or required about and that employee is later terminated. Information is little bit of known fact that shows you as well, but sometimes it's in your interest to not, to not know certain things. Why you have trust me, anybody in the management seat that make these decisions. You don't want to get involved in their personnel situation that comes up.
And we didn't with Brian or Louis either. We, we were brought in on the things where it looked like we were going to have a lawsuit on our hands.
Let me ask you, can we stick the pin in there? I'm not told. Pick a pin in and we can.
Those two things, we have a pin.
Yeah.
And then we also have revisions to, that was requested to, um, section seven.
I thought that one, that one before.
That was, yeah, that was, that's what I.
Yeah, we do. We got the sense.
Part of the language to these.
Well, yeah, yeah. Yeah. When we get through, we'll see where we are. We can may ask, I don't know.
Well, we, we always, we always, we always talk to the press. I didn't have any other questions.
I don't have any questions to say there. I mean, that's. You know, if we got. Come back and revisit it because this is.
Like Bill's suggestion said, I just want to make sure that there's no objection. For part of the heads on. Section ten of article three. Thirteen.
Nineteen.
Fourteen of that.
Fourteen.
So. That, yeah, just make, we, we, we've said that there's no objection for. Make sure there isn't. And. They do the changes to. Article five, six, seven. And, um, Mr. Mayor, do you have any? Proposals for language to. Article. Article nine, section.
The unsatisfied, drunk performance and improper personal conduct.
I won't think about it. I mean. I still think, I still got the same question in my head and you. So.
Yeah.
If we need to, yes.
Now, there were some, there was some question about the. Article. Article three, six, nine. Of where we. On a consent, is there a current shooting court question of that? Section. So thanks for the four, are you satisfied with that?
Well. Oh, to. It's good, I'm good.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
I talked to the department again. I had to talk to the other supervisors and different things. I leave that to the department. It's. Have those conversations.
Right.
But. Well, I feel better, but I mean, if you talk to the department, it is a narrow time.
Yes.
Because they do. They're very honest.
So. Talk about some of these things that have been revised. What's this hip? In terms of retired. What's been revised there?
There, how's the chart?
No, I think it says two.
Okay, so there was a. A proposed revision, something that was brought to us, but having been, I talked about it because we didn't make it into the policy. But we decided not to bring that forward because of fighting to like Rosie to the town.
So it's in here, but it's not.
Well. I put it on here, but it's not, it's not a revision. I'll stay in as it is.
So the page fifty-six is not about.
No change.
Okay, so we just say. Come on.
Uh, what about the? Education system question, what happened then?
Um, we are proposing that we change it from five hundred dollars a fiscal year to a thousand. Or employees. Last fiscal year, we had two employees that participated in going back to school and submitted the paperwork, submitted the pantry. So it cost the town a thousand. So far this year, we've had one employee that's participated in that. So we're recommending going from five hundred dollars fiscal year to one thousand.
The pressure on the restrictions for what is paid is good to pay.
It had to be something that the town manager deemed would help them in their career currently or one that would make them amenable in the future.
And apply to police department as well. They sound entirely different.
This is totally different, though, it's your thing. You're thinking about education, paying for education in the salary. This is different.
That's what degrees they have.
And like, people from the police department have participated in the education assistance program before, but.
Increasing the benefit to the employer.
Right.
How does that line up? I think you're touching on there, but how does this line up? When we have authorized payment for the BLT. And then sign all of this. It's a separate front. So do we need to have some language that indicates that that's? That the BLT is, I don't want it to be, if it's, if it's a separate benefit, I don't want to say, oh, well. Here's that thousand, that covers the BLT.
But I would say not, but we're hiring someone and title police recruit that is their title in the BLT pros are handling. So that's already specifically addressed.
That's, that'd be a pre-hire. Uh, payment.
Well, those payments are being paid directly to the agency where they're.
This is separate from that. This thousand dollars is separate.
To the employee as reimbursement for their books and things and all that.
I just want to make sure it's not, um. I just want to make sure that those officers aren't even sure.
Because this is, this, as I, as I, as I understand this, this is, I, for example, if I, you know, it's, it's.
Criminal justice.
Yeah, you want to, you want to go back and get a, you know, get a master's degree in criminal justice. And then the town will pay up to a thousand dollars.
This is the rate reimbursed, so with the five and money you're already paying out for the, for the, like, the back to get a degree.
We have to have some funds there.
I want to throw this out there. I don't know if it's, um. Something we're having appetite for, but I've seen some. Where you get employer pays for education. And there's a bit of time after paying that last payment, that's what you can work two years or something. And I don't.
I, 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 I think that that for, to, in, in my mind, that's, that is. Companies that are paying four and five and six thousand dollars towards, you know, towards that are expecting that. I don't know that for this. For eight, eight plus, yeah, it's a different level.
I just want to put that out there because I've seen that with some lawyers, they're paying. They're paying for raising.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I work, I work for companies that, that pay, you know, I think one, someone who earns ten thousand dollars. Yeah.
There are, there are towns in our market that are paying four, five thousand dollars a year for the free. I compare counties, we're, 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 we're primed with those progressive salaries and costs. Or if we can get that right, it allows us to create this and make others. You know, it's like going on this, but that's, I think. That's where our employees really need to learn to fix some deals.
Oh, I agree. But maybe it's still a more competitive position than we all.
And that vacation leave. A difference.
The accrual rates and the accrual period are a little bit different. Um, we're trying to look at benefits that won't cost us anything, but benefit the employee. So, um, whereas in the old policy, there was. Five levels, less than three years, three, six, six, twelve, ten, we filled the eighteen and eighteen plus. We put an extra level in there where we broke it down and put a level from ten to fourteen years. And then we increased the accrual rates. So it is building towards retention. So, um, the quicker that you get to another level, it encourages you to stay longer. And, um. It's retention. They used to try and get employees that have been here a long time, every one of them was that have been here a long time at a higher, higher rate. Because when somebody leaves, you can only pay them out two hundred and forty hours regardless of how many they have. Then at the end of every year, that amount over two hundred and forty rolls succinctly. Well, succinctly the hours convert in service time. And that way, some employees will retire with a year of, an extra year of service, which adds to their monthly check upon retirement. And the people that this is going to benefit the most are the ones that are that career focused. That they're staying here for the long haul, they're going to have a retirement and we are helping keep them here. For this retention step.
And that number is declining as people are changing careers at a more active pace. The number of thirty-year employees. Probably all the way.
I'm.
You may not keep them thirty, but you keep a guy who was going to say two, say five or six. In today's market, that's a winner. That's five years of long-term employee in today's market.
How long is that to work before it becomes vesting, though?
That's the retirement system. It's five years.
Five years.
And for older, they stay closer to thirty, they get the benefits.
There's a crease. We're not able to stop it, but it's a formula based on age and years of service. And retirement's your highest four years.
Yeah.
And about holidays was different there.
Well, the proposal is to add June team. The reasoning behind that is because Governor Cooper, um, sent out an executive order two sixty-three called Personal Observance League. We've always followed the state recommendations, the state policies for holidays. So because he sent out this executive order. Um, he's allowing state agencies to use it like as a floating holiday type thing. But instead of doing that and trying to keep up with that for everybody, um, we're proposing just to observe it on a nineteen, that's a holiday. And that's what most of the municipalities that we follow and check for are doing. And most of the agencies around us are doing that. So that's. Saturday, Friday, and Friday, Friday, and Friday, Sunday, and Monday.
Going to add a day for a vacation. Over the, over the, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, I said one thing and this thing I don't know. That's done. So we're going to add a day to it. How much is that going to add to our budget?
We haven't anything to do with it. Take all of it. Pay advice if they work at that, so it's. It feels like a workday. That's, that's forty, forty hours. And, and we're trying our best to make sure that we capture policies that are missing, but also making sure we remain competitive. Or kind of address essentially identify something that our peers are doing. We don't address it, then it puts us in, puts us in. Especially ones with policies like that, that don't call for it.
For recent, um, our current policy spends three days. We're changing it to forty-eight hours because it's a lot easier to administer in hours than in days because of all the varying work shifts that we have.
That's forty-eight work hours. That could be, that could be up to a week.
Do we modify that to make sure it's known as a forty-eight work hours?
Yeah, not yet.
Because we are, we're two days. Three hours, forty-four work hours.
Well, forty-eight hours. Being fired. Well, then we did that four times a fire. They worked twenty-five, quarter hour shift.
If I already fired.
Higher. If I aren't, yeah.
About three hours is fire. Just then.
So much prior to four.
Yeah. So you. But no, they work twenty-four to quarter hour shift. So they, it would, the forty-eight hours would practically be about two days. But they only work ten or eleven days in a month.
But I mean, to Bill's point, if it's, there's a difference between forty-eight hours and forty-eight work hours.
Okay. The work, work.
And it would be a hundred and twenty-four too.
Yeah, so, yeah, because if I, if I, if I work, if I work. If I work eight hours, if I'm, if I'm a normal eight-hour shift, then that's, that is six days.
He's had the word work after forty-eight and after twenty-four.
Yep.
We've had a lot of discussion in years past about, um. Boyd using their vehicles. It says it's new on thirty-two, so fifteen markers in that.
Yeah.
It's actually revised.
Well, it's on the health card.
We do. Um, the change is to clarify what the distance for a take-home vehicle is from the assigned work location. We never had a parameter. Um, it would be interpreted different ways in different departments. So our recommendation is, um, under no circumstance will employee be approved for a take-home vehicle that lives more than twenty-five miles from their assigned work location. Um, the clarification on miles and how to calculate it, so it's consistent across the organization for all departments that have take-home car.
So before, we didn't have a large gap.
Right, and it had a, it was sort of an un, unspoken twenty mile. Um. And now we're saying twenty-five miles from the work location, which is the same as twenty-five miles from the ETJ. But the ETJ is about five miles. So, um, it's easier to calculate because, you know, the ETJ goes like this. So if you put in the work location and put in the home address then. And use the same. You know, website, whatever, every time, and that's how we do it.
And twenty-five miles, they can live in Pittsburgh. They can live in Asheville. They live in San.
Anything, St. Louis.
Yeah, they live in St. Louis. What other directions?
Bonn, like there.
They have, they go to Seagram.
Exactly.
Yeah, he read all about in there. All.
I'm, I'm assuming the assigned work location for the majority is either going to be town hall or. Fire department, police departments.
All, all three of those is the same, I mean, we're in the same parking lot, so that's all the same. Then you have the wastewater plant, the water plant, um, the garage. Fits dinner.
Give me that break, thought we already had that covered.
That's a new policy.
Yeah, what's that all about? Thought we were taking a break. Thought we did that a lot.
Well, it was to clarify, um, break periods for payroll purposes, because we do have people taking breaks. Um, or they'll take lunch breaks, but only take fifteen minutes, which makes it a break instead of a lunch. So it's to clarify payroll-related issues and how we should be paying or not paying for those things. And it also, um, addresses the federal law, uh, for breastfeeding issues for those that are pregnant and. Or have had your baby and need to get there at work. Federal law, sorry.
If we've been having an issue, I would just.
No, but, I mean, we put it down for clarification, so if there is an issue, then they have a policy to go to.
What, what is the break, like, when you start talking about breastfeeding stuff, I got all off track. So what is the policy, what is it?
That, um, they may take up to two to fifteen-minute breaks, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Um, they're not used to extend lunch, or, um. They can't combine the two breaks into a thirty-minute, the policy's legal, and that turns it into a lunch, regardless of what time of day it is. So it's just clarifying that, um, mostly for payroll purposes, but you have a lot of people that take a lot of fifteen-minute breaks. It also addresses smoking, um, in here.
How, how do you, how do you address ADA-related issues? Um, like, for example, so if someone is diabetic that needs additional breaks to go get water, you know, hydrate, et cetera.
Any ADA issue we have, that person has to come to HR and do an interaction process for ADA under the, under the law. And we would make those accommodations.
These policies. And if you've got high range, you can't have a certain kind of light.
Sure, it's, it's very.
You have the same.
I should present that, that note from the audit saying that, uh, our people are lying, struggling to do the boards, but everybody have their mic on.
This brought to the, we, if we are on Zoom, or we're all, on YouTube. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, I think when the governor took up the, uh, emergency order, we couldn't zoom in.
Well, and our notes from Zoom, it has, the volume is always lower on Zoom, and. Going forward, you know, for, for audience participation or citizen participation, it's always amazing to me to see the people on screen.
We don't see that anymore.
Yeah, so, but if they want to listen, definitely want to go in here, is there a way we can boost it?
Well, it's on YouTube, so, I mean, the only way we can boost it is talking into the microphone, like you're sitting far away.
Yeah. Not going in.
We need to fix long term, we need to finally get into the courthouse, courtroom, there'll be mics from that drop-in cell, and that will, they won't have to have mics at the table anymore.
Who knows?
Yeah.
Like, and I'm, like, overly ambitious.
They go without. But also, thanks for saying, hey, now, we want to make sure, a break may seem like common sense, we want to make sure it's defined and caused. All policies exist because at some point or another, it would be. So, you know, the fifteen-minute break at the shop may be fifteen minutes driving there, fifteen, the shop fifteen minutes drive back. You know, that forty-five minutes or fifteen. You want to make sure you spell these things out.
The chemistry and challenge.
Well, that's something we can point people to specifically, so.
How many, I'm curious, how long did these, uh, I know we had a couple weeks to have the review, it's how long did the department have to give you feedback? Um, at least, they were long, yeah. Yeah, we, when did they get it?
Yeah, probably knows.
I, I have to look at my emails, hold on a second. Might take me a minute.
The editor might be, in here, kind of, they call their department, it, it lasted a couple hours, it's boring, everything.
They had it on the Wednesday before y'all got it on Monday. Then she delivered, so they got it before y'all did.
Think they got it on the second.
And we need to have an opportunity to, we've had a department head being, uh.
Yeah, they actually had it before then, or that's been the meeting one.
Right, okay.
Yes, we got, we got ours the, the Thursday before, so that would have been. Or, no, no, the, seven, the meeting was on seven, so.
So, there was a, yeah, there.
You know, the department had meetings on the second day.
Tina, Tina just said they got it on ten twenty-one. Mm-hmm.
Okay, we got a month. Yep.
I, I don't think anybody left that meeting going, like, the air was on me either. It wasn't like, no one was, we weren't putting bins and things to say, let's come back and discuss it, like, everything's. Was there not that meeting at the department level? No, no one asked me to begin to discuss it.
Right. And we've got electronic communications, knew about that.
That is a new policy, and the electronic. Um, it is with clarification accountability and expectations, um, of appropriate use of sound electronic equipment. Uh, related to business and personal. So it lays out things about telephones, uh, cell phones, emails, and the accountability of the employees and shortcomings. Uh, in those areas.
Got anything in there about overuse of your cell phone, looking at tablets?
That's a different policy, but we'll cover that.
Yeah. Which one's that? Personal cell phone.
Okay, and it is said, at the discretion of the department director, so if we can use the department director to address it. They may communicate using their own personal devices, then, uh, workplace, and interfere with their jobs. Um. And it's expected that it be kept at a minimum during the workday. It's just the standard expectation, not exactly the whole policy.
Department heads are way in a desperate position to, and it's just probably to enforce that. Trying to make people specific on that, and only say, you know, at the clock, counting how many minutes they're on the phone, but, you know, it's something to be. But using that pretty. Which doesn't make people mean, but, but.
Like, um, so I'd say that's fairly straightforward.
Why?
Workplace, though.
Yes, I mean, it, it gets, with some details, but yes, that and the, um. Vengeance in the workplace, they're two things that we've never had in our policy that we should have had in the policy before. Um, and these are standard policies in all municipalities, so, yeah. Kind of worry workplace violence, um, bullying, those kind of things.
Well, somebody comes to Marver to deer or something, they're done with that.
From locked up, at a site.
You expect me to handle that without going into a situation?
You just go over and take it out of the truck, you know? Yeah. This is, what we named this phone name.
To tell them about, um, if they have a, a name change, address change, phone number change, but they need to. Complete a form that we keep in human resources and put their personnel file, because we have to communicate those things to the vendors, like, for their health insurance. Uh, and all the other benefits, we have to communicate that to them, and we have to have the proper address on file for them, they want to go to it.
And. Special appearance.
We're trying to lay out some very general, broad, but yet narrow. Um, the parents, uh, specifically the ones that are meeting the general public on a day-to-day basis, so that we are appearing professional to the general.
And anything specific that you may have?
Well, I mean, we didn't put it in the policy because it gets very, um, iffy, um.
You can say. Well, we have personal hiring, say those things, and start getting more specific. A lot of organizations that face lawsuits for violating their personal right. So we tried to address personal appearance, we're making sure we did not run afoul of thirteen-minute law, that's a very. That's, that line has been getting easier to cross in the last few years. You start, I can say, you start telling people that they have to cut their hair a certain way, even in that. You're going to end up some major rework, reprotection.
What about things like, um, wearing clothing articles that, uh, have logos or promote, uh. Some organization or something like that. Does that go?
Closing a visible tattoo, snacking art, words, meaning that would violate Title VII of the Civil Rights Act.
That, that would be discriminatory, so if someone had inward on clothing, that would apply, but, but would not apply to a particular business and family, you may not. Enjoy their service or something. You don't like the tip of a barbershop, and they're wearing their shirt, it wouldn't apply to something like that, it would apply, it would apply to something that would be, you know, highly offensive to family or anything.
Damn, yeah, you know, that's, they can leave reasons, I'd be over it too.
Well, and that's, and that's the tricky part, is when we get to that subjective place, um, that's where we're running foul of first amendment, where we're trying to, um.
We put it out there to give some broad guidelines, but we'll have to dress it on a case-by-case basis, as it would come.
What are they?
Oh, that's good.
What's the, if, you know, I'm, I'm thinking if it's not to you, how much. You're out of dress, or what are you talking about?
Doesn't cost those people, as well, on their, whatever they choose to get up in the morning and sit down.
Yeah.
Look, uh, read Water Meter and. Scare us, there's a leak, he needs to have a town shirt on if he's going to get a person, this house.
They haven't talked.
And, and we're not changing anything about a fact, anything about our policy, but it's a template allowance to address an issue legally if it works where it does.
PPE.
So it is giving some direction and clarification about, um, details and accountability of the town. Um, PPE that they have purchased for our employees, um. When they don't turn it back in, as I've been our practice, that we, um, get with the vendor, find out how much those things cost. And deduct it on their last check, if we get that information, because we provided them these, these things. And we have seen throughout the years, people in town wearing town saw the shitty uniforms that had it on your boot here. So we're trying to, I haven't seen, I don't know what about you. But this is just, um, trying to get all the things that the town had purchased back in our position. Um, and it gives the old guidelines, um, for the supervisors on how to address return equipment and funding the PPEs.
It told me already, keep them on. Right, and when it comes to the PPE, this is not meant to cover comprehensively everything. We're working on a safety manual, fair policy for the town that would show much more depth about that, and departments will need. So the party have procedures that way out, particularly to PPE, very well with that. This is, this is, this is a bit of a dress that you could go.
And, well, any willingness?
Um, that's another proposed, um, lead back, uh, with not possible anything. That is trying to keep this competitive, this is something that, um, as Halle has offered for years. Um, they offered the time, um, it's like a flex, flex day, but then they add an extra time if they go and get their annual physicals. Now, they don't have to turn in anything that, there's anything about it, but they have the, there's an affidavit that the doctor will sign, saying that they're a non-smoker. And then they would get additionally, so it's trying to keep our employees healthy and to, um, try and help them. But they're not given an incentive to, um, not smoke or use tobacco.
In hours or days? Hours, eight hours. Oh, but, yeah, that's a whole day, in day increments, bigger than that.
Yeah.
We're setting also in that their health insurance, I know, could possibly shield it if you were not a smoker. Then your rate is, on this side.
Uh, yeah, if you're not a smoker, it's lower.
Yeah, that's why.
Our current, um, health insurance policy is not designed that way. Um, who knows what, 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 what they'll propose for us in the coming years.
But I'm saying, that would be in place in case they had to use that as a. Incentive not to smoke, not use it, to have a lower rate.
And go to the doc, now, this isn't going to affect our rates at all yet.
But I would say it could in the future, if, if you already have it in place, then.
Then they know what to expect. Yeah.
What's that last name, you?
Um, that is a law that's out there that says that we have to give employees an opportunity if they feel, like, if they were terminated and, you know, unjustified with. That if they want to have a name clearing, um. Offer, yes, it would be, that they can do that, so it would be a public hearing that, um, that can invite anybody to. Um, and a lot of, it, it's been coming up lately, um, and a lot of the. Um, this sort of information and a lot of agencies are now having to put it into their policy. Um, we have disciplinary, uh, interdisciplinary conferences when we get ready to take any kind of action, but this would be post-action.
It's, it's come up, this, if you don't have this city policy, it's something that is the first amendment, if it identifies the first amendment right. If you don't offer someone the opportunity to have a standing clearing, you know, there's a lot of worry now.
Yeah.
We do.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question, question, how many?
Yeah.
Six forty-four, the last page, alcohol cases. The one. And you'll see that, um, if you remember, in the past, we had a list of all the title, position titles of people that were. Um, taking fit to the video drivers, all the things. Um, we took the specific titles out, because if we changed something, like, we took the fire department off, the volunteer, we took them off. Um, we didn't want to have to come back and bring the policy every single time, so the definition's still there, it's still going to be applied the same way, we just took the name titles out, so.
Most of our information, I appreciate everybody taking the time to go through it all, right? There's always a great equity and bringing everybody across our organization because, as you can see, a lot of things that we're trying to address, kind of, and that have been addressed and, and also for, regardless of the language, having all these policies in one place helps our employees a lot, really. Access information. And had it been in a more logical way, that's the difference. A big step forward for us.
Mr. Mayor, given that, you know, the policy has been had this for a month. Uh, there's been no objection voiced, I'm okay with Article Three, Section Nine, I've seen them. I know we have some proposed language in Article Five, Section Seven.
You want to say that as, I know we can approve it as amended.
Do you have any other language you wanted to propose for?
The one that I have, and so can I still have issue. But, or I've said, you've been sitting here thinking about it, is that I feel, I would feel better. And I'm, I'm not willing to, to, to go along with what's in there, but I would be willing to reconsider that, me and Hank can sit down privately and talk about that. That might come up, so I don't know. But I think if he and I just sit down and talk privately, he may come to some kind of understanding about that. But as it's, as it is, I'm still not satisfied with that particular part, the one, the one I have to have opinions still.
If you're rolling over some proposed language, and we're, we're going to stay, go on. In addition to the language that proposed today, or would.
Say we could be able to do it. The other stuff we talked about, you know, the adding of that.
It's just that, Article Section, Section Seven.
I mean, that can be, I, I'm not, I, I'm not convinced.
So we could, we could, we could approve all.
I don't want to approve anything until it's all, all done. I don't, I don't think we should go along and do, just break it up and be a part.
Well, we're, what we're talking about is, there's, there are eight parts we don't have an issue with, there's one part that.
I understand that, but I understand you want, you want to do it all or nothing.
And I, I'm fine doing, you know, the first eight parts and then leave, leave the last two for discussion, because that, I think that that.
And Article Nine?
Yeah, I need to leave Article Nine, yeah, leave Article Nine out of it, approve Articles One through Eight and Ten.
Time to approve Article Five?
No, I approve, yeah, approve everything except for Nine, because that's the one that, that we seem to have, we seem to have discussions remaining on. Because I, I, I have a reason, I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that these get implemented. Yeah.
Anything back on if we approve everything but the disciplinary phase? Is if we, my concern is if if we become entrenched on Article Nine, and that's the T. That's the T, so. I mean, I'm not, I really don't know what language you contain, Article Nine.
This is really Article Nine, unsatisfied job performance, detrimental for personal conduct are, are definitions universally accepted. All of that, that's very consistent. Everything else is real, the luxury example.
The definitions are there under unsatisfied performance, detrimental conduct, those are what you're going by.
Right. The one I'm talking about is applications, not the language, you know. Not the work on the language, I mean, I haven't come airin' that out, I'm just, that's what I asked you, do we need to cover additional language? I don't know what that will do with.
So what are you saying, you all sit down and have a talk?
No, no, I'm saying we, we can't. Yeah, I just thought, well, probably to affect the.
No, I think, I, I mean, I think it's all, it's, it's better to, I mean, to, to sit down and talk, we can, and I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't, I think. But I do think that we, we ought to be able to approve the, you know, the, the other articles outside of Article Nine. But my, my opinion.
It might be that language to get proposed and one of the other articles to impress. There's concerns, not necessarily something that's ought to be in that, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I, I don't. But this can always be changed, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
You're saying, yeah, I don't know if it's a general that we might address.
That comes up.
Are you suggesting we do everything except that?
Except, yeah, I'm suggesting we do everything except Article Nine. My suggestion, I don't know what the rest of the board feels.
Just make a decision.
Oh, thank you. Did that need changes or? No, there's no, there's no, there is no proposed change on the table. The only proposed change on the table is on the degree two, which is Article, Article Five, Section Seven. We agreed to that language.
What I'm saying is current Article Nine reads almost identically to the new article.
Yeah, the only thing that we added some more definitive examples in it, but those, and those examples were wrapped up into broader examples before, but it's like Hank said, that this is an all-inclusive list, I mean.
Fully without limitation.
Right, right.
Where's the?
Under Section Five, under that, job performance, it says the following list is reinstated and not involved or exclusive.
I need to place all of those examples out, that really deserves to assist management or department.
Oh, my, there's no.
Yeah. You're having those things in a part of it, really write it and direct it from those things, just simple about that.
So everything except, y'all can, then we can talk about that, then we can come back and improve things like Rick.
Yeah, I, I don't know if this is part of the concern, I did notice that. I remember someone mentioned due subordination, that language that follows the code. And Subsection Eight, Eight, Three, that language is in the old, this isn't.
The working's coordination is in there.
Yeah. Anyway.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, with you. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we, that we approve Articles One through Eight, Ten, Eleven, and Twelve. In the proposed policy with, with the, with the amended language in Article Five, Section Seven.
All right, we got a motion in the second, in further discussion about that. All those in favor say aye, all of those like sign, that motion, okay. Next. Town of South City elected advisory board to have a resolution. This is the one where governs the, the boards, I mean, if it's served on it.
We're, we're, yeah, the, the difference, we're, we're subjecting, as I read, please correct me if I'm wrong, we're subjecting the, the the advisory committees to the same ethics standard as, as the Board of Direct, as the Board of.
That just come out.
We've been, we've been, we, we approved it in point, well, I was. We're extending, we're extending the same considerations to advisory boards.
That one of the, one of the, land on the gas.
Okay, that's right, because I was, I did one, that's right, yeah, that was right after I came on.
That's correct, so it was different.
They're incorporating the advisory board.
So we're just, we're just holding advisory boards accountable to our same code of ethics.
So, and it'll require my law to have it, so.
So, does that mean they have to take?
Yeah. It's a class of old, it's where, not just the board commission.
Yeah, two, board commissioners and all the advisor boards.
It's already filed to board.
Yeah, okay, well, my paper didn't say it. If I, that's written out. This is the one we adopted June, damn. In Twenty Three.
The, the new code of ethics goes from Twenty Four to Thirty One.
But it's the same, it's the same language that was in, that we adopted in Twenty Fourteen. It's just, it just apply, this, this new resolution applies to the advisory boards. That's all we're doing.
Yeah, because I didn't get my package this, till this morning, or I could say somebody.
That's what I'm getting.
Yeah. And I didn't get an email. All right.
I mean, I think it's always on the same space.
But there's nothing new, there's no change on here from previously, just expanding it to the advisory book.
Jennifer, are you aware of any other changes?
No, it's just reformatted, but no changes.
The motion when adopted of the new, and it now South City Resolution, Subsection Ethic for the Town of South City, like reporting the advisory board.
Yeah, motion in the second, in further discussion. And all of the favorites say aye, all of those like. Okay. It's new.
My new advisory board policy.
This is the one where we're changing the number of people that.
I, I, I had a question.
I got all kinds of issues with this one. We had, and, and I had enough time to look at it, we'll table this. No, you don't have to have a motion, I gavel down. Yeah, you don't have to have a motion to do that. So we can bring this back next time, just gavel down.
You have to have a motion.
You don't have to have a motion.
Just look into this very issue with somebody else, and thank you, Ryan, under Robert's rule.
I don't know.
Thank. Regardless, I, I don't think, it's a, I got all kinds of issues.
But here's the thing, man, nobody's. If we don't.
Micro motion is changed.
If we just table it, we never get to talk about the issues, I've got an issue too, we can just table it.
It's going to take a while.
I mean, I, I got questions about.
They've already.
Yeah, I got questions about.
I, I got issues with that too.
Yeah. I've had so many fifteen minutes to look at.
Oh, for example, just by way of example. They're telling the committees they can only, once every quarter. I'm wondering if it would be better to have some language where that was a four, instead of a ceiling where they could.
Minimum of.
A minimum of, exactly, then I had another question. It is because Jackson, the King Velvet leader, is he going to be required to go to all of the meetings? That are going to be proposed for all of these committees, because these are all part of government, so I don't know what. I don't know that, the answer to that.
Also, that's the red, that's sort of requirements. And you got all kinds of people on the boards that don't live in the cities, in Atlanta.
I like Commissioner Ray's suggestion, because there are questions that you can have a, a special call meeting.
Yeah. Have these committees, do they have, do they have any input in?
I have spoken with the department, it brings up with their advisory boards.
What we want to mean is the advisory boards have had a chance to look at this.
I, I, I can't, I don't, I'll have it on, well, I can say the department has been, has been here, the board. I know some of them have, I kind of want to say that all of them have.
Well, I'm right for, if everybody have a little.
Yeah, I should have some input. Yeah, I think that would be a good idea is to, is to give, give them some input in. Yeah, absolutely.
Also, I've got a, I don't see it listed here, I see our traditional. I understand that's probably what we're focusing, but just, just create several new boards that we are all divided amongst. Rec, what kind of divided, what, what. And I know there's good. Listen.
It, it's addressed, if those are, there's a difference like the strategic plan or the Sanford-Holzhouser, that's an ad hoc committee. That's different from the park security, by the way, it's the standing committee. No, it's the standing committees that are addressed.
I remember there was one that, I think, I still can, sure, when Commissioner Bray will point to the new rec ad hoc and ask a question, we don't really need. We don't know yet.
That's right, because the article meets are out, so we have to award a bid to somebody for that park direct national plan before we.
So those, those committees that we formed for purposes of those plans are not included in this, because.
Only in the sense that this policy addresses that the board has the authority to create ad hoc committees.
Okay.
But it doesn't address like, like it does at the end of this policy saying, this has, this member remembers it needs forward, where you're, it doesn't address it in that sense. What you want, ad hoc committees are meant to operate for a short period of time, as needed, and then dissolve. So want to have that flexibility, should make those changes, for a standing committee, it's more about transparency, making sure people know when it needs and what the rules and features are.
I mean, okay, I like Commissioner Bray's suggestion that we have. I think there's a lot that we have to discuss on this.
So, yeah, so do we need a, a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, we table this discussion tonight in favor of a call, a, a special call meeting.
How long will it take to get this to read all these committees?
It, it really depends on when we have the meetings.
Maybe you can send out an email of certain dates and then everybody see what they can do, maybe do on some of the other stuff. Where we have a consensus that we can, I'll be there like, blah, 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 a certain time, blah, blah, blah.
A lot going on between that and.
And I'd like, yeah, I'd like the, the board, the, the standing, the standing committees to, to have some time to. And I'd like, yeah, I'd like the, the board, the, the, the standing, the standing committees to, to have some time to review it and then provide input.
Does it have to be done like? In November, December or?
There's, there's a timetable.
Okay, so it'd be after the holiday.
Yeah.
You do not have an advisory board policy at all right now.
Okay.
That's the whole purpose of creating this.
Right. Yeah, I think, I, I, I would, I would like, yeah, I think the, the board, in my opinion, I, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the board, but I do think. That it would be good to get the, the standing committees' input into, into this. And then come bring, bring that, those recommendations, if there are any, back to us so we can have a further discussion and ask, ask and answer questions.
All right, so we got a motion. The motion is second, and it's, we need to restate it.
No, sir, I think I have it.
All right. All of the favor say hi. All of the votes. Lights on. All right. Name of the board.
Kind of related to all the version four. Has a conversation with Taylor Hall this afternoon. That they're, they're going to have the new final meeting. On contract there on December the first. What that means is that's when the meeting will take place and go over the final punch with what is the. Generally, it takes around a month. That type of punch list. Followed the holidays, we have a date on December one, I will not count on. All that being included in the back half of December. But, so our meeting, we expect to go end of the year, probably not going to happen. But that also means that it shouldn't be terribly far off or. But punch list. Couldn't worry.
Yeah.
December five is our next regular meeting, which is the only regular meeting, which we will not have the. Third of December. That's also our scheduled schedule, present day, before our advisory board.
No meeting when?
The. December nineteenth, and it would be. It's long. We'll have several presentations for December five, so we're going to try to. Apparently why, obviously we have things like Article nine, we'll have to bring that, but. We're trying, we can push up in January, we can, no, present. Everyone's favorite.
Right.
December the eighth, another announcement by Christian Fray. We'll have a meeting before you arrive in, and it'll be in front of our partners.
December eight, not the first?
Eight.
Oh, I told you it's first.
Yeah, originally came out the first. Yeah, December the eighth.
Yeah, I thought there was a tech, you know, about December first.
There was, there was a federal. I know. I, I just, December eight, I just came out about for a reason.
We're keeping a meeting on the fifth, we're canceling nineteen. You're going to, you're going to get back to some dates for a special call meeting.
Anything else? Won't that be for now, the end of the year, or more of that?
No, 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 I'd like, I want to give the, the boards, you know, the boards, let's look, yeah, let's kick it to January. I don't think they've weighed in.
December, have a few things in December twelve. Christmas animals that we do on a clean way, an order from Wood, that will be delivered. Not more than a year. Also, that means we'll have the. Times from our, and voice survey report, and that's where they go with the deal.
That's at six o'clock, right?
Six o'clock, December twelve. That, that's a special problem. That's on Monday. It's at six o'clock, not six thirty. And it'll be a whiskey pizza in their back room.
Oh, it's just pizza. You make the motion, you have all.
Yes.
On December fifteenth, our employee Christmas party, that's here from eleven thirty to one thirty. Means that our. Next meeting in the year, year off will be January third. We'll be in there in years, and even in the second, February second. On filing, we have an activity that altered for planning direction to extend that. But the person came out yet, so they have not performed a turning board, but they passed the met down. Drug screen to be far in December third. Their side grade phone board, and outside his first, that's. Sensual experience.
So the eighth is the parade. Twelve, we have a special call meeting, send us the hand day two.
Yes.
Special call, the hands.
You can bring your hands.
If not.
Fifteenth is the lunch.
Present guest. Nine thirty, one thirty.
Nineteenth is canceled. On the day schedule.
I got.
Yeah, there you go. Oh, yeah, I didn't get any when I was going to do this stuff. Raise up speed on where we stand with DEQ, what's more.
Sure. We have a meeting with Denver next Monday. We hired agents with orders, other consulting firms, Tom Pant, who's seen, that will fit us, that process along further. I'm not saying that, not hit the wall. We have general back and forth with the review. On. Meeting done request for the S O C application. We can file assumptions on this meeting on the twenty eighth, we'll be discussing. Leading the milestones they've asked for, what type of allocation would be awarded.
Do you hear anything, on, on most things, on. Your thoughts on our progress on this?
Yes, I've had, I've had conversations with their attorney. Chris, I know I've had a lot of conversations with their attorney in South.
They're turning small leads to the lead.
To what lead?
In Q.
They're, they're aware, and they're invited, they'll be there, they're welcome to begin, and most people, in New York, that's just like, that's been the thing to them.
What's your feelings on us being able to reach a resolution at this next meeting?
Well, I, I don't think you're ever, you're going to reach a resolution for quite some time on any of this. The, the S O C application at an accelerated pace, the way you, you operate, it takes twelve months. That's versus two, three years. So, and that's, you know, front, that's, that's the process, and that doesn't mean. We don't work through that time period, that's part of the conversations. Give us, recognize the goals that we're meeting all along the way in that process and be willing to grant us allocation. That's the way that, that process is going to work, well, we'll be under this moratorium for. In several years, I don't see that, that changing, but that doesn't mean it, it has to. Congress of potential subdivisions, housing for future business, because we're meeting the goals that we have agreed to.
Well, that's where I'm concerned, because this, this, this. Peeling that progress. So, we think we get to a point where, on the next meeting that we reach a resolution, we're going to proceed forward. With that progress, I'm, I'm understanding that certain thresholds will be met periodically.
I, I will start with that side, I don't want to tell you bill goods and say that's going to come, completely come out of this meeting on the twenty eighth, because that's, that's always the goal. You know, we, we've got to meet whatever DEQ's expectations are, but they have to be upfront and telling us what they are. That's all that I can all.
And our term rate, when DEQ asks for additional information. We're, what is our turnaround time, I mean, we getting right on it and doing it as, as expediently as possible.
Where issues may exist, they've been addressed.
And this new, this consulting firm that you said a while ago, the unit, have they taken the place of the one that we had?
Uh, with what we, our existing relationship was with, uh, Miguel, and with David Hunkett. They've done a great job on the engineering side. The individual that we're bringing in with his company has direct inside experience working with DEQ. From the inside, and knows that relationship, the goal of working with them is to make sure that. We're coming in from every angle, talk for, make sure we're able to reach consensus agreement with DEQ. And we're not talking passive though. So. To accomplish Commissioner Bailey's goal, making sure we come out with a positive result from the meeting. There's what's this with that, because he knows the way. He knows the way they talk and what their expectations are. And lawyers, managers, engineers all have different ways of addressing problems, we don't want to talk that.
How about to, 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 to. Moratorium during the field then?
What construction of what?
Westmoreland.
By the way, I, for Chris.
Yeah, that's moving forward, that's actually. The way the schedule is, that we have proposed written out, that's when the moratorium ends, is when the plan is finished. Yeah, and we actually, we have our opposition instructions on the plan.
You keep us up to date and let some money.
My last time.
Like, why'd you lie?
Well, you've heard me say this before, that if they need information, we don't need to lay any grass. Throw, and or get the information back to them, and keep the ball in DEQ's hole as much as possible. Because if, if we've already experienced this some, any opportunity that they have, put the blame off on us, they're going to do it. So, I thought is keep the pressure on them as much as possible. And at that point, you know, there's other people that can help us apply some pressure or whatever to. I just don't want to lose it, you know. We just, we have got to stay on top of it. I mean, right on top of it, no matter what, but right now, that's job one. The town of South City, and that, that, all of those stuff we're talking about is, is worthless, it's worthless.
We're, and in addition to that, addressing these issues, sort of multi-pass. Because it's not, it's not one issue that's causing more for us. We have some challenges with Mount Air that we got to address. How's that going?
Real good, real good. They've made some changes that we requested, and it's, it's actually helped, you can see a difference in the plan.
And we have that evidence to present at the meeting?
I was going to ask, I'm glad you asked a question, I was going to ask. Every month goes by, Mount Air is paying that much in fines.
It's substantial, over ninety thousand was the last one?
Yeah, so they're getting billed an extra ninety thousand, because the DEQ bills us, we bill Mount Air. And it's, it's what they're doing, is that, is that going to lessen that penalty or what?
Yes, they should eliminate it.
About the stench. So we were told, we all met and talked about it, they were coming, there would be no stench.
So back on, you know, whether we like it or not, when it smells, whatever, Mount Air is still one of our customers. That's still part of the town. And I would also like to see that we stay on top of that, that do whatever we can to mitigate that fine that Mount Air. Because I know I wouldn't like it if I was getting more, how many months now they've been getting more? Yeah, they've been paying a lot, and I, I know there's a lot of issues really, but. Yeah.
If you're a citizen.
Yep, that's exactly right, I think we're called citizens. I just want to make sure that we're still paying attention to what's going on, though, all those things that we don't, we don't want to forget about.
We've produced conversations with our friends in Randolph County. Ashford, I'm sure, and the great country construction of this utility line from Ashford coming back this way. We've got to make sure we have to do the right thing, because we're only working with you.
And that's something Rain's sure too, discussions going on down.
Yes, there's.
On the plant, over there.
Your conversations are all well, we're, we're going to continue to meet every month over at, at. House of.
Oh, one other thing, and I don't know if we touched on it, you know, some time ago, we said something about. Getting a consultant firm or something in to come in and. Interview our employees, find out what's really going on, where we stand with that.
Well, that's part of the plan, so we're going to talk about that December twelve.
That's part of what the presentation means.
Okay. But none, they haven't done anything yet, right?
I'm sorry. I haven't done anything, you mean, got, gathered.
Information from.
We had information, yeah.
Okay, who did that?
Mr. Jackson, Derek Jackson.
Well, yeah, it was in you. Okay. Have it, absolutely, for me, or, yes, there's, any apartment reports? And attorney?
Oh, no.
Governor body community?
You just lost another person. Well, I understand that position's not going to be filled.
Oh, you're talking about.
This is a record.
This time out, this that was against us to not take it.
And that supervisor has to go to watch, lobby is closed. And while she's back on her own vacation, so the lobby is going to be closed there today for the whole week.
That's, that's actually Police Department's administration, how they do that. All setting for a planned withdrawal acquisition.
Chief Wagner, can you answer that?
No one available, the lobby will be closed during those time periods, and Andrew is not available.
Go ahead, we need a tip or something. Lobby is going to be closed for a week. So the whole lobby in the police department is going to be closed for the next seven weeks.
So who told you when to go to lunch, or have you?
Yes. Well, I mean, if I run to the bathroom, I might just run in the restroom, but if I go to lunch. Which I haven't the last couple days, because I haven't had time, the lobby is closed. I lock the door.
Got sick or anything? Nobody heard?
Then we had to do some tough decisions. Put it to file. On Monday, Friday, we had to make some tough calls. Dispatch over the county, et cetera, but. You know, I have it open for a long sheet of vacation. How, how, how? I just look at our, I look at our, I look at our. Vision state. Our seat isn't safe. Police Department is closed. Got to figure out a solution. Expectation, I think.
I agree, now we can't, we, we can't do it.
I think that's something we talked about all.
I have a solution.
I hear you too. Some of the main functions of the government is, there's police station, fire, and garbage labor, those are three main functions. That, well, yeah. You're right.
Well, can you, maybe. How well with. Ideas and solutions can come back to this?
Yeah, we, we, we need to have a resolution out soon rather than late.
Yeah.
That will not, that will not. That will not, that will not go over will with anybody.
Well.
In this part, yeah.
Yeah. Playing process of, uh, you know. One of the help leaders that were more committed to. Protect our citizens, that's. I did have a, um. Lady Kane, to senior, uh. Fifty. E. You know, I'm not gonna disclose names, but. Back pattern was it. She was in her car, driving to police station as the individual was chasing her. You got. Individual was still chasing her. For having assaulted her. Yeah, we gotta. I'm not trying to put screws to you, Hank, I know we're.
This is one of those table stakes.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta figure something out.
Well, you got that one, right. I hope you don't have a clothes station.
Maybe we have video.
Billy Redd.